With they will now.
Keep sending me first. I'm Eric Commissioners. Just reporting, you guys may or may not be aware that there was a small house fire. Could have got out of hand Saturday night, close to Sunday morning. Got called in for the fire investigation that was over on Sylvan Street. Resident had just gotten home, went upstairs to go to bed and was alerted by her smoke detector. So she had a small fire in the basement, most likely caused by an extension cord. It was extinguished pretty quick. We had Ferndale and Hazel Park respond. And she was still able to live in the house. It had minor damage to like a movable portable bar in the basement and there was just a little bit of material on top with an extension cord running. Just installed a couple more smoke detectors for her and I think she made it clean because they had to do some cleaning of the smoke and everything. But just a word of warning, trying not to use extension cords permanently. Because they break down over time.
She did have a smoke detector.
Smoke detector.
She got it, same look.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one. So that's all I have today. It was relatively quiet 4th of July. I hope everyone had a good holiday. There was a lot of smoke out. And I was driving home at midnight and I was like, it looked, there was so much smoke, it was crazy fireworks, you know. So I hope everyone had a nice time.
Be heard.
Yes.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
You, your team did a presentation at our anniversary thing regarding safety checks. Now what, how do they, how do residents sign up for a safety check?
So I had about 10 to 12 people sign up for those. And they can contact the fire department, call 248-546-2510 and just press zero and somebody will put them to my office.
Okay.
And then I'll respond to them. They can leave a voicemail with their email or whatever they want to do with their phone number. I'm having a sheet looked at by our city attorney just to verify that it's okay to do that. I've done them in the past, but I just want to make sure it's good for him.
Okay.
To approve it. So that'll blow up in the next few weeks.
And what all do you look at?
So we probably got close to 30 things I look at. We look at the GFCIs over the sinks and everything, make sure they're functional. A lot of houses don't have them, but by code they should have that so they don't get an electric shock. Smoke alarms. Everything we do is a recommendation. It's not like going into a building or a business and enforcing the code. We can be invited into a residence on a non-emergency, like a safety inspection and give a recommendation. So I would say, hey, you should have a smoke alarm on every floor, have them in every sleeping area, you know. Tell them where to put them and everything. We'd even install them for them. We would look at the wires outside, if there's any branches on them or anything. If they have a pool, make sure they have a fence. We look for rodent stuff outside because those rodents chew wires and stuff like that. Make sure that there's no fire hazards inside or outside the house. We'll talk about an escape plan for the family, how to practice that. It should be practiced twice, twice a year. Fire extinguishers on each level of the floor, pretty basic stuff, but it's all stuff that's real safe and affordable. And it's knowing two ways out and stuff like that. We also look for things like trip hazards, if their carpet's loose on their stairway or anything. Because it's more, it's also about community risk reduction as well. It's not just fire safety stuff. So it's a good it's a good preventative tool.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then we would also recommend, you know, have us come out when you get those repairs done, make sure they're done safely and correctly.
That's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Victoria.
I have a question regarding fireworks.
Yeah.
What are the regulations about, like how many days and how late at night, et cetera? I have two dogs who do not.
It's, it's by, I believe Mr. Brecklin can help me here, but I believe it's by municipality. And in Ferndale, I know we did it from, we followed the state rule. So 11:00 AM was the day before July 3rd and they extended it to the Saturday after the July 4th. So it was at the 6th, I think. So it went to, from 11:00 AM to 11:45 PM. So, and then they'll do it, I think the next one's Labor Day, day before, day after.
Okay. So. Because they did extend beyond 11:45 PM.
So that's one I would recommend, just calling the police department and then they would enforce that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Wait to get called. Good evening, everyone. Been quiet around here as well. Just a reminder to, other cities have seen some large vehicles, lock your doors if you have a key fob in it because you have digital entry. Put it somewhere where you can't be seen because they'll steal your car and things like that. We've just seen uptick in that around communities around here. And I've been made aware, as you know, Chief Bache from the fire department is the acting chief. They're currently soliciting and accepting applications, whatever. So he has to go through the process. So what I've noticed in working with him for the last several months since Chief Sullivan retired and then was off for his medical is the cooperation and their willingness to volunteer to show up. As you had mentioned, Commissioner Perry, they showed up at that event. They bring people. They came to the memorial ceremony and force, stuff like that. So I don't know who we can contact there to put a ring endorsement for him because I think they're going to interview other candidates and stuff like that. But I know that the police department has worked well with the fire department moving forward in the last several months since the chief has taken over. So anybody that wants to.
Sure, yeah.
Who could we, who do we know, who do we?
All right.
And this not what, this was not solicited by him, by the way.
He needs to be in at every, every one of our commission meetings.
Right.
Which is gonna be terrific.
Very nice. So anything that we can do to endorse him as a candidate or our choice.
We will.
We will do that. Okay?
We will find out what's, what to do.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
All right. Next item, Commission Liaison Reports. We'll start with Commissioner Perry, Planning DDA.
Thank you. The Planning Commission DDA did not meet, has not met since our last meeting, but we will be meeting on Monday, July 22nd at 7:00 PM right here at City Hall. And we would, the Planning Commission DDA would like to wish Mayor Metzger and Jody Metzger a hat.
All nights Jody is with four children. I don't know, so her, so our daughter can go see us Dave Matthews concert. So. So here we are. We're split, but I'm gonna go join her. Hopefully the kids will be in bed and asleep.
Sure, thank you.
Was that the report?
That's it.
Well, I hope we can get one in, everyone. Okay, next, Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Just two dates to put on your calendar. August 8th, we'll be having a lecture series on how to research your historical home. So August 8th at 7:00 PM at the community center. And it'd be an excellent opportunity, as so many of our homes are quite old, to learn about the history of your home or how to research it. And then the second item is our annual Home and Garden Tour, which is September 21st. I think we have eight houses at the moment. The team has been working on just getting everything together for the, for the event. I think we've had some research done over the last week on the homes, photographs taken. And it should be a really nice event. And moving into the fall should make the fall colors and everything really stand out.
That'd be fun, great.
Really nice. And our next meeting isn't until, and that's official meeting, isn't until first week of September. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Wall with Recreation Commission.
Hi.
Hi.
There's a lot of fun summer things going on. So for the first time ever, I just want to talk about it and call attention to it. We're having a family camp over. Is that right? Camp over?
Camp out.
Camp out. Camp out.
Over camp out.
Call it camp somewhere. Camping over behind the rocks that are already have movies, popcorn probably, right? All kinds of good things, swimming, all private little situation. There's still 20 feet left, so do not hesitate to register. Really fun. And the foundation's sponsoring it, so it's free.
Date?
Oh, yeah. The 2nd through the 3rd overnight of August. Yep. I'm giving you information in little pieces. Sorry. Starts at 6 o'clock to 10:00 AM the next day. You don't have to stay the night, but certainly you're welcome to. Okay, I'll be back to July. I just wanted to call special attention to that because it's really cool and different. Okay, July 10th, adult swim only, 8 to 10. July 17th, ice cream social, 6:30 to 8:30. July 19th, teen swim only, 8 to 10. July 24th, adult swim meet, 7:15. And it's not too late to register, so register, start registering until the 24th.
Yeah, and they've started practicing tonight.
Okay. Okay. Another adult swim, July 26th, 8 to 10. July 28th, swim team banquet. Pool closed early for the public. And registration's underway for the St. Girl Show, which is pretty cute. The latest edition of the records online and feel like I'm forgetting. Oh, we haven't had a meeting, but we are still, are we figuring out? We're still figuring out because there's a conflict. We're trying, it's gonna be the end of July at some point. Stay tuned. We'll post it. We'll post it on the city website.
Same, same night as this.
So same night as ice cream social, that's why.
Adults swim.
Oh, adults swim meet.
What night is the ice cream social? I didn't write it down.
It's okay. The ice cream social is 17.
Got it.
Yeah.
And the adult swim, the 24th.
Swim meet.
It's the 24th.
It's the 24th, okay.
Yep. Is everybody cool?
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, I'm all set.
That's a lot of dates. Is that it?
That's all?
That was it, yeah.
All right. Any other questions for the mayor? Any other dates? Commissioner Krzyak, Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items I wanted to go over. These are, they're important to the district. They're representing some projects that the district has been working on. I felt like our Pleasant Ridge residents need to stay abreast. So as a liaison, I wanted to make sure all my neighbors knew about a few items here. So they had a successful end of school year. So there wasn't much on the agenda as far as school activities, but they did talk about a very important presentation. This was the strategic plan. We've talked about this at previous meetings. This is the 2019 through 2024 strategic plan for the entire district. They did a good job, in my opinion, of getting insight and contributions from the residents. They had an advisory panel that was created to work with the district, with all stakeholders. And this is what they came up with. So initially, to lead the presentation, they talked about the vision for the district and it's crafted through equity work. And this is a quote as far as the vision for the district. At FPS, we are a school family of continual learners. We support each and every student to develop their purpose, plan, and passion. We encourage and honor dialogue about the histories, cultures, and goals of our communities. We actively and intentionally facilitate equitable access and representation, meaningful participation, and high expectations for all. So that was the vision as a whole. And they broke that down into empowerment, environment, and excellence. Those are going to be their focuses. As far as empowerment, Ferndale Public Schools will empower our students by providing an engaging and collaborative culture of inclusion, equity, and transparency. For environment, their mission statement was that they will welcome all into a physically and emotionally safe learning environment, which includes financial, physical, and personal resources. And for excellence, they talked about providing access to high-quality and inclusive programming with a focus on excellence, student engagement, and continuous improvement of academic achievement. They laid out particular objectives under all these titles and they established metrics for all these goals. So they will revisit these every year to make sure that they're on task for all this object, all the objectives. I would love, and I talked a little bit about this with some of the members as far as getting a representative here from the district, either a school board member or somebody in administration to utilize our PowerPoints and dive into this a little more deeply. So hopefully we can have that in the future. They also approved their 2019-2020 budget. The numbers are available on the website. I won't go into those. And finally, this is from the, the language here is from the latest e-blast because I wanted to get it right. This is concerning the upcoming 2020 bond update that we all be asked to consider. Earlier this school year, Ferndale Schools announced that they would be seeking a zero-mill increase bond in March of 2020. If approved, this bond would yield approximately 85 million for Ferndale Schools. At the time of the announcement, a committee was formed to begin to collaborate with the staff and Board of Education on the process of selecting the areas of the district that this bond would impact. An architect has completed the facility assessment of all the schools. And upon review of these assessments, the administration and committee agreed that the construction of a new lower elementary school should be investigated further. This was attributed to the age, nearly 100 years old, and the potential cost to repair and upgrade Roosevelt facility. The superintendent met with representatives from the cities of Ferndale and Oak Park to discuss the possibility of any potential partnerships that could come from this bond, as well as land options for the construction of the new elementary school. Due to the potential cost of a new school, they're estimating $25 million. Superintendent Bosse said that the issue must be thoroughly investigated and decided prior to making subsequent decisions on other areas, other areas for impact with the bond monies. She wanted to stress, and she made very clear in her language, that while these decisions are ongoing, they wanted to make several things clear. No final decision has been made with regard to the construction of a new elementary school. And more importantly for us here in the city of Pleasant Ridge, the ultimate fate of Roosevelt has not been decided at this time. So she implored us to keep aggressive updates, which we posted on the website. And if you have any concerns, please reach out. The information can be found at ferndalschools.org. But this is going to be a period of discussion on the future of Roosevelt Elementary School. So I know many in this community, I know many on the commission and the administration obviously want to stay abreast of this. And I just wanted to share with the residents that this will be ongoing discussion. And if you have an opinion or concern or question, the district is eagerly making themselves available for any kind of inquiries or comment. So, and that's all I have for this one.
Did they, just a question, did they talk about enrollment forecasts?
The enrollment, I think, and this is off the top, I'm trying to remember. I think it was pretty stable. I don't think it was huge swing up or down this year. I know we've seen some, last year's numbers were actually up district-wide. But I can go back and look and give a more definitive answer. But I didn't hear anything, you know, extraordinary about the enrollment numbers one way or the other.
No, and I'm especially curious if you're planning to build, the possibility of building a school. When are you building for?
Right.
You'd have to justify it.
Absolescence. Right. Well, I think that the issue on the table, and this is why I think especially people in this community are concerned, not only because our connection to the district, not only because many of our children are in the district, but also the future of Roosevelt. So I think the district is not adding an elementary school. So they would be just replacing Roosevelt at this point. So. But that's just kind of like Superintendent Bosse said, this is ongoing discussion. I know many residents are concerned. So definitely if you want to, you know, vocalize your opinion on this, you know, you should consider, you know, contacting the district.
And I guess I would, I can maybe add a little bit of color to that. I've been to a few of the bond committee meetings where they've been discussing this. I think the biggest issue with the Roosevelt school is that to bring it up to current educational best practices requires, it requires adding on to the school. One of the things that they talked a lot about was the cafeteria or the fact that the gym is also the cafeteria and that's not current best practice, even though I think we probably all went to school. With that situation, we're growing up, seem to make it out fine, but you know, I'm not an educator and this is something they feel very strongly about. And there are some other, you know, facility needs that they didn't feel that they could adequately bring Roosevelt up to speed on. And in fact, to do that, it would be very difficult because they would have to add on to the school in such a way that, you know, something would get lost. So the playground would get destroyed. And now what do you do with that? Or, you know, the parking situation and traffic and everything over there. So, yeah, I, I don't know how they do that. And I think that's a lot of what they're struggling with with the Roosevelt site. So I think that's really the, the point of, of building a new elementary school is just of modern standards. So that, you know, I don't think really impacts the enrollment figures. I don't think they're expecting a surge. I think they're hoping to continue to keep more in-district students, which is a trend that they've broadly had over the last few years. And then, you know, the question was discussed quite a bit of, well, what happens to Roosevelt? And there are some options for that. They've got the Early Education Center, which is over at Harding, which has its own limitations. There's very little outdoor space there. So that could be a use that they could move to Roosevelt, because there's actually better outdoor facilities. It might be, you know, a better home for that. So there's a lot of, you know, unknowns that they still have to work through on this. But, you know, I think it's pretty clear that they want to build a new elementary school. The sites for that are very limited.
It's a good idea. Where, what land do they have?
Yeah. So that's what I think they're still kind of working on, is trying to figure out where that ends up going. So that's, those are the discussions that, that, you know, we've been a part of, or I've been a part of at least, mostly listening. Because.
That's, yeah.
But, you know, our, our concern is what happens to Roosevelt, the building?
Right.
If it's not a school, if the school district is going to get rid of it, what do we do? So, you know, we're ready for that if it comes, but we'll see.
Good.
All right. Next item is consideration of the consent agenda. It's very short, so I'm going to ask if I can have a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be approved.
Is there, okay. Any discussion? Can we take the vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, condemnation of the property commonly known as 38 Kensington, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. For the public hearing, I'd like to have Jim just kind of bring us back up to speed, just for a few minutes.
So the situation we have here is that the property at 38 Kensington was hit by a tree. I think it was back in September of last year. And it did, you know, some pretty notable damage. You can see here that the side of the house where the siding is have been bowed out. Can't see it well from this picture, but there's a tarp that's been covering the roof. The backyard's been in pretty notable dis- yeah, this, this image here shows the situation pretty well for the condition of the house. There was quite a bit of lag time in between. Nothing really happened over the winter. What we were told was that their insurance company was involved and there was difficulty in getting a settlement. So we had gotten a certification from a structural engineer last September that the house, that the house was safe, the structure was sound. It just needed to be repaired. So while the homeowner had pulled some permits to kill the electrical and to do a little bit of other work to stabilize the structure, those were active for six months. But by this spring, nothing had happened. And we started to make complaints. So we entered into the condemnation process, which is a tool that we sometimes use to compel action by a homeowner. And that's, that's our intent here. We still believe the structure is safe and salvageable. Our intent was to just get the property owner moving. And in fact, since we've started the condemnation process, the former property owner has since listed and sold the property, since we called for the public hearing last month. Somebody has purchased the property. They are fully aware of what they need to do in terms of the timetables that are set forth and the memo and the sample motion before you. What we're requesting is a 30-day period for the new owner to secure building permits and 60 days to begin construction on the site. They are fully aware of all of that. They couldn't be here tonight, but they know that. In fact, we've been in conversation with a contractor for the new property owner. So everyone knows what the score is right now. So hopefully we'll have this rectified and addressed and fixed up soon and put this one to bed. But we are still asking to do the condemnation so that we have that tool available to, you know, continue to make sure that this does get done in a timely fashion.
Okay. For opening the public hearings, are any, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. The most severe consequence at this point, if the condemnation proceedings continue, what would be the most severe consequence? What's the end?
Well, the end is if they continue to do nothing and refuse to do anything, we could have the property demolished. And then that would become a lien on the property and whoever bought the vacant land would reimburse us for the cost for that. That would be the ultimate remedy.
Okay.
That's not the goal, though.
Absolutely not. So we, this, like I said, this is a tool we've used a number of times. I think there's only one time we demolished a house and that was because it was too far damaged to be rehabilitated. In all other instances, this has spurred the property owner to action. We use it across the street here. We've used it at a number of locations in the past. So, you know, this, it just gives us a hammer to, you know, more so than even just code enforcement to compel action.
Good. Thank you.
All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anybody who has anything to say, please come forth. Please, can you come, come to the podium and give us your name and address?
I'm Victoria Wuss. I live at 46 Kensington, which is several homes away from that one. And I was just curious to know if there, there was any consideration about the proximity to the property lines of that, of that structure. It seems that it's very, very close to the property line and not up to today's standards. I think now it's five feet. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like that one is closer to the property line than that. So I don't know if that was going to be a part of the consideration when they're talking about rebuilding.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, please.
So it's an, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the setback is there. It probably is less than five feet. But that's an existing non-conforming structure and it has protection under zoning. It can remain. So you can invest and repair and maintain a non-conforming structure. You can't add on or increase the non-conformity. So depending on what they want to do, they're going to have to comply with current zoning requirements for the new portions. If they are going to do an addition or increase the volume of the structure, they'll have to comply, but the existing structure can remain.
And as, as far as you are aware, the existing foundation and basement and everything else is sound?
So the structural engineer's report we had in September indicated that because it's sat for a winter, we're requiring a new certification from a structural engineer. Again, the new property owner knows that, so they're working on getting that done for us.
Okay.
So we will have that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Hello. I'm Amber Herrick and I live at 40 Kensington. It's my car. It's my drive, my backup driveway there. So I guess, speaking again to what you're mentioning there is, you know, we do have some concern. That house is 12 inches off the property line. And so I just want to know that we're going to have a better understanding, you know. Again, if, if it's not going to change, but if it's going to go up, you can see the window is going to block everything we see. And so I just need to, and I know that that'd be my responsibility to kind of understand what can happen a little bit better, but you know, it's just a concern of ours because, you know, we have lived like this for a year and we don't want to live in a construction zone for a year. And I'm a little disappointed that the new owner isn't here so that we could have, you know, had that conversation of, so we have some expectation. We have some issues going out of the fence line that was supposed to, the fence that was supposed to be replaced. We've now hired someone to replace the fence because those fence pieces are all over. And so we've been waiting and now we understand there's a new owner. And so there's a lot of things like that. So just like on the record, you know, we're a little just frustrated with the process. Not at the people, but at the process that, you know, this has just been a long time. And so like, like Victoria pointed out, that offset is her awning comes on over my property line. So it is definitely a concern of ours of what is going to be allowed to be built there. So it is definitely a concern of ours of what is going to be allowed to be built there, how high it is. And the construction process is, I don't know how you construct a home without being in my yard. Because, you know, if they're going to do any work on that, you can't walk down there without being in my, in my property line, so. What is the process of like knowing what they're building and things like that, I guess is our question? Is that something that is available to the public, of knowing what's going on?
Once they submit plans, anyone can come in.
We can.
Yeah.
Okay. And when are you guys expecting, based on, it sounds like you're talking to the first one, which is great?
Right. They, you know, like everyone, they've said, oh yeah, we'll have plans in by the end of the week. We'll see. But they have 30 days to get plans in and get a building permit secured. In terms of the setback, you can't expand a non-conforming structure, so in a way that doesn't comply with the ordinance. So in terms of going up, that's going to be a challenge for them.
Okay.
Because it is non-conforming right now. So they could build an addition off the back, or they could potentially do something with dormers or something that would comply with the ordinance for setbacks and where those projections go up. But we also have some, we, for lack of a better term, are anti-bigfoot provisions. So we have a side yard sky plane requirement.
Okay.
So that, and so if you think about the buildable area on a lot, you've got setbacks and you've got height. So it creates a three-dimensional cube within which you can build. The side yard sky plane, what that does is, based on how close it is to the side property line, it chamfers the edge of that box next to the property line next door. In a case like this, where it's very close to the property line, even that side yard sky plane setback requirement would probably come into play here for how high they could go close to the, to the property in the house next door. Again, we won't know until they submit the plans for what they want to do, but they're going to have to comply with all those requirements. So we will see what they propose and.
And so in 30 days, should their cleanup process be going on? You said they have 30 days, should this?
They have 30 days to secure building permits, 60 days to start construction.
How about cleaning up the yard? Anything?
We'll talk with them about that.
Okay. There's weeds in the front here taller than me.
Okay. So that's a property maintenance issue that they do need to stay on top of all the time?
Aside from condemnation.
No. Someone came out and mowed the lawn this week, but they're still up by the house, like literally. I took a picture, I was like, oh look, the weeds are still, it's me. So I think that, you know, if we have someone that's going to take responsibility going forward, I just hope that we, we hold them to that nice and tight, so that we don't have to continue to, you know. It was, it was a rough situation, you know, with, we all developed relationships and friendships with our neighbors, so we try not to say much. But now that we know there's a new person there, we really hope that the city, like, I don't have to be friends with other contractors, I, I really just hope the city stays on top of it for us.
Well, yes.
What's the start date, Jim, on that? 30 days from when?
Tonight.
Presumably.
Right, potentially.
Any other comments before we close the public hearing? Okay. Close the public hearing. Now we'll move on to condemnation of the property commonly known as 38 Kensington, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Do I have a motion?
The whole thing?
Yes, the whole thing. That's why I didn't read it.
Mayor, I move that the structure on the property commonly known as 38 Kensington Boulevard, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan be condemned, and that the property be declared a public nuisance. The structure and property is a public nuisance for the reasons as set forth in the city's letter dated June 10th, 2019. The property owner has 60 days to comply with the order. The property owner has until August 9th, 2019 to obtain permits, necessary permits for the reconstruction and until September 9th, 2019 to begin construction. An inspection of the property by a structural engineer will be conducted within 30 days and submitted with the proposed reconstruction plans. Progress on this property will be monitored by the city's building official. If the property is not in compliance within the time period set by the city commission, or if the building official deems progress to be stalled, the city commission directs the city administration to pursue any action necessary to abate the existing nuisance, up to and including demolition of the structure. Any costs incurred by the city related to such abatement shall be considered a lien against the property. The city shall deliver to the property owner a copy of this motion by first-class mail and by posting a copy on the front door of the property.
Oh, beautifully done.
Thank you. It's very well written, you guys. Thank you.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote, please.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. We will stay on it. Next item, city commission chambers renovation bid. Jim?
Thank you.
Easy for me to say.
This fiscal year, the big facilities project that we're undertaking is refreshing the room in which we sit, which, I think we can all agree, could use a little love. We've been working with the same architect and design group that did the big room project for us over at Four Ridge. They've come up with a bid set and a set of plans for this room, sent that out for bid, and we received bids back. The low bid amount was $97,705 by Ustand LLC of Auburn Hills. Ustand has a long relationship with the city. They're the ones who constructed the addition to the community center in 2003. They do ongoing historical museum maintenance for us. They did the community center big room project last year. So we are familiar with Ustand, we know the work they do, and we're comfortable with them being a little bidder. In terms of the project, the schedule is yet to be determined. We need to coordinate that with the contractors. We've got two major ones who are going to be working on this. There's Ustand, and then there's also the audio video, audio visual contractor who's going to be doing those upgrades for us. So we'll have permanent cameras for multiple angles installed in the room. I think we have three or four cameras that'll cover different things. So when people are at the podium, we'll have one that can, you can see their face. There'll be a couple in the back, so we'll have much better audio visual. There won't be the temporary camera, which takes up a couple seats in the room as well, so that'll help with capacity. So it's all going to be good and useful improvements. Some of the background equipment for the audio visual will actually allow us to webstream directly from the feed, so we'll be able to do that as well. So it's going to be some nice improvements. Ustand has proposed five weeks for project completion, so our goal is going to be have the, to be, to have the room disrupted for only one city commission meeting, but we don't know when that will start yet. Sometime in the next few months. Other elements include new chairs and furniture to replace the sort of Elks Lodge 1966 look we have here. Some new flooring.
Just going to give the sound off.
Wall coverings.
Get rid of the glass.
Yes, the glass partitions we're going to remove. There'll be a half wall at the back of the room to still provide some visual separation between the space for the 99% of the time when there's not a meeting going on, people coming in and out. It'll still define the hallway, but during a meeting, the glass walls, when there's a large crowd, it's a separation, people can't hear. So it'll better connect the space when we do have overflow crowds. So it'll be a better use of this overall area. And I think that's the high points. So the requested action is city commission action to award the bid for construction to Ustand LLC for the total amount of $97,705.
Any questions for Jim? Any? No? All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Your honor, I move the bid for the city commission chambers renovation bid be awarded to the lowest qualified bidder, Ustand LLC of Auburn Hills, Michigan, in the amount of $97,705.
So support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Can we have the vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Look forward to it. To you. Next item, the Woodward Avenue Complete Streets Plan. Jim?
Yes.
Back to you.
So attached in the packet was a Woodward Avenue bicycling and walking safety audit. And that doesn't sound necessarily like a complete streets plan, but the reason for that title is because that is the grant that we received for a walking and bicycling safety audit. However, Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge, who partnered on this grant to study Woodward Avenue from 8 Mile to 696, we shaped the plan and are using it to further our complete streets vision for Woodward. So in 2014, the Woodward Avenue Action Association created a complete streets plan for Woodward Avenue from Hart Plaza all the way to, rather, Jefferson, all the way to Pontiac. It was a broad and wide-reaching plan, but it wasn't specific. So this plan was used to further develop the vision that that plan created and come up with some more specific recommendations for how we could build in some bicycle and pedestrian improvements for Woodward and Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge. So the goal is to implement what we call AAA bicycle facilities on Woodward and AAA. It's something that the city of Vancouver came up with, and I really like it. Stands for all ages and abilities. Sometimes you'll see eight to 80. That's something that I think in Columbia and Medellin of all places, they started that movement. And now, yeah, the former mayor, Gil Penalosa, is going all over the world because what they accomplished there was actually quite incredible. So the bicycle and walking audit is a further refinement of past complete streets plans. And also, in order to implement this, MDOT has a road diet checklist that has a number of things that you have to check off, that you have to do to be able to implement a road diet. And a road diet is anytime you take away a vehicle lane. If you're adding a vehicle lane, you have to do very little. But if you're taking a vehicle lane away, you have to jump through many hoops. So this was, fulfills a couple of those boxes on the checklist with this plan. So there was a public input component of this. There was a survey that we publicized that got, as is the case normally, a very good response from the Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge communities. And so some of the key outcomes of that survey were this question, how would you describe your level of comfort with bicycling? And most people described themselves as casual bicyclists. They prefer separated paths. They'll ride on some roads where space is available and traffic is manageable. The next highest category was experienced riders who are confident and comfortable riding with traffic on the road in most traffic situations, but Woodward is probably even something that's far beyond an experienced rider's ability to ride in traffic. So what we find from this is, if you're going to do bicycle infrastructure on Woodward, it has to meet that AAA standard. And then, you know, this is a very sort of busy graph, but I'll point out the high point here. What keeps you from walking on Woodward Avenue more often? And the big thing here is crossing the street is dangerous. Weather, of course, is one we can't control that much. Crossing the street is dangerous, traffic makes me uncomfortable, and too far, too long to get to. These are the two we can really impact. And concern for personal safety as well really ties into these. What keeps you from biking on Woodward Avenue more often? Here, the biggest one is traffic makes me uncomfortable. And of course, a lack of bike lanes and paths, which, you know, is pretty, pretty clear. So we know we've got some, you know, pretty obvious problems on Woodward. If you walk more often on Woodward Avenue, if any of the conditions applied, or I'm sorry, would you? So crosswalks and signals provided more was the number one answer, user comfort. And then corridor has a more pleasing character were the biggest one. Would you bike more often on Woodward if any of the following conditions applied? If bicycle routes and sidewalks were separated was clearly the number one answer. Because you know right now, if you ride your bike ever on Woodward, you're either riding on the sidewalk, or some people ride in the alleys, which is a better, but not great, bicycle riding environment. So again, the key point here is that sidewalks are not bicycle. Unless you're Brett Scott. But I thank Brett for being my, my subject. For his picture to make a point. And again, this is how Vancouver defines their AAA bicycle facilities. So what's not all ages and abilities are sharos. In fact, there's a growing body of research that sharos make bicycling less safe.
Yeah.
Sharos should never be done again, ever. A painted bicycle lane, okay, this is where your experienced riders will start to go. A paint buffered bike lane is a little bit safer for your experienced riders. But when you start to get into all ages, local street bikeways are protected bike lanes, where you've actually got a physical barrier between the bicyclists and the cars. And then off-street pathways that are nowhere at all connected. So, you know, riding through Gainesboro Park is this. Riding through most of Pleasant Ridge on our local streets is this. Riding on Ridge is sort of this. So, you know, we have a lot of varied conditions around, but riding on Woodward isn't even on this, this, this sort of spectrum right now. So our goal is somewhere in here, I think, for Woodward Avenue. So the outcome of the plan, this is the recommendation for how we implement that. So what we do is, we move the parking lane. So this right now is the parking lane. And you've got your sidewalk here. So you take your parking lane and you move your parking lane out, you lose one lane of traffic on Woodward. And you do some improvements at intersections and some places in the interim condition before we reconstruct everything. The bike lane is going to have to bend around light posts and, you know, some of those things that are, you know, expensive to move in the short run. So there you do a concrete barrier where the bike lane has to bend out to get around those, and then you use cars as your barrier between the bicycle lane and traffic. This allows you to then widen the sidewalk, provide some better buffering for the sidewalk, so that feels like a little bit less of a hang-on-for-your-life situation while you're walking, and provides that bike lane. Now, why do we feel confident that we can go from eight lanes to six lanes on Woodward? We know the traffic volumes between 8 Mile and 696 vary between 35,000 and 50,000 cars a day. Volumes are highest as you get close to 696. Traffic engineering rule of thumb is one lane of traffic will move 10,000 cars a day. So we don't need a infrastructure that's set up to move 80,000 cars a day here for our segment of Woodward. And in fact, when you get up to 13 Mile on Woodward, Woodward does move 80,000 cars a day in four lanes of traffic. So, you know, we have two-thirds of the traffic that's at that location, but the same number of lanes. So we feel confident that we can provide the same levels of service along Woodward vehicles while also incorporating bike and a better pedestrian infrastructure. Now, the long-term outcome, when we can reconstruct everything and move more curbs, is that we move that infrastructure out of the way. You have a better bike lane here. Probably bring the bike lane up to sidewalk level, so that you've got a curb here as well, and that's the gold standard. And then we continue to use cars and other elements as the buffer between the parking, between the travel lanes and the bike lanes. For the area here, we have the specific area on the west side of Woodward and Pleasant Ridge, where we've got the ditch, and we don't have any on-street parking. So here, the interim condition is we just have concrete barriers that we have for here. And those will be temporary, it'll be curbs or other elements there. And we go from three lanes to two for that entire segment. We carry about 10,000 to 15,000 cars a day on the surface level for that segment, so that's more than enough for two lanes of traffic to handle. The long-term condition, again, is you bring the bike lane up to sidewalk level. And then this makes a much nicer sidewalk condition. Some of the areas, if you're walking along that sidewalk, you're very close to traffic. You've got like a two-foot little green buffer that falls down.
That falls.
Yeah, I mean, if you stumble a little bit, it's, you know, it's not comfortable. So this will improve the entire condition for there. And then, of course, we've got the area where we bend off onto Main Street. From Woodward onto Main Street to go up into Royal Oak or to get on 696, this is something we piloted, you may remember, probably about four years ago. So we actually studied this and piloted this, where we reduced it to one lane coming around this bend.
Oh.
So then you don't get people driving around this bend at 60 miles an hour. Because it's basically, you functionally have a two-and-a-half-lane-wide cross-section coming around here with one or two lanes, two lanes that can turn, but your two lanes actually are closer to a three-lane width, because, so everything is, it's just incredibly bad for anyone who's not an Indy car driver. So here, you narrow that down, you increase the angle of this turn, you build the bike lane in along the edge, and then you have three lanes instead of four here. When we studied it, it worked with the one lane coming around the corner and then having three lanes of, through traffic there. It met all of the conditions. Everybody still made it through one light cycle. Nobody, you know, some of the backups were further, but everybody made it through in[1761.26] one light cycle. So it didn't take any time away from the driver at all, even though some people were aggravated because it felt, you know, bad being in a longer line. It didn't really materially impact anybody. And so this was the test that we did. I think it was 2015 when we did this. One of the other things is upgraded intersections and crossing locations. There's a lot of them. That's a big, that's a big issue for pedestrians because right now you can cross at Sylvan, Sylvan Oakland Park, you can cross at the Service Drive, and then the next one isn't until Campbell. And then even in Ferndale. So, you know, you see people crossing at the gas station where there's the one light on the northbound side of Woodward and people cross the median there all the time. People cross in the medians in downtown Ferndale all the time, just because, you know, it's, if you talk about inconveniencing a driver by making them sit through one additional light cycle, inconveniencing a pedestrian who maybe is here and wants to get here and they have to walk all the way around, that's adding, you know, seven or eight minutes to a walk. If you had seven or eight minutes of somebody's drive, rage. So that's a, that's a big deal for, you know, the walkable local community here is, you know, we have a street that's a mini interstate built to prioritize through traffic that inconveniences the people who live here and are, you know, visiting and living and just trying to move around within Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale. So there is a plan to upgrade a number of intersections for crossing locations.
Fighting.
Yeah. So, you know, again, single step. This will take a long time to implement, but a lot of these are new, a lot of these ones you see here are new locations that don't exist currently. So how do you handle some of the details of this where you have cross streets? One of the things that we pay a lot of attention to is the fact that oftentimes now cars, when you're waiting to cross, pull into the crosswalk to see oncoming traffic. And that's because you have to. Otherwise, you're just sort of, you know, driving out. Because you have to pull into the crosswalk to see oncoming traffic. So we mitigate that through design where you create a landing spot for one car to see oncoming traffic better. And as you move the travel lane, turn this parking lane into, or I'm sorry, turn the parking lane into a bike lane and turn this into a, the travel lane into a parking lane, you create a landing spot for one car to get out to have a much better view of Woodward. And then you create another stop bar back here and then you bend the bike lane back a little bit so that you can continue to have a crossing space behind this car. And again, you know, this, it's the same situation you have in a lot of cases, like we had at Oakland Park where we put in the no-turn on red is because the driver on Woodward is focused in only one direction, to your left. So any pedestrian or bicyclist coming from the right, oftentimes the driver doesn't see them because they see the opening and they go, not seeing the bicycle traffic coming from this direction. So this driver here is much less likely to just go. So bicyclists coming this way will be seen by the car here waiting. This car can just go without having to worry about bicycle and pedestrian traffic because that goes behind them. And so the result of this is right now, this is where the stop bar is at. So if you actually stop where the stop bar, this is the view you have of Woodward and it's not very far. This would be where the new stop bar would be located and you can see you have a very clear view of what's coming at Woodward. And then the bike lane would go behind you here. And it'd be a safer situation for everybody. So from a practical standpoint, you know, this is great and we're working on this. You know, we don't want to wait for some sort of pan Woodward bike lane project. We know conditions are different south of 696. So Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge, we're working to implement this on Woodward. Now, bike lane, you know, it's, a bike lane is only good as the network it's connected to. Because if you get on a two-mile segment of bike and ride your bike from 8 Mile to 696, that's great, but, you know, you need to go sometime. So it'll help us, you know, if you can get to 696 and hopefully Royal Oak will have some bike infrastructure you can connect to to get to downtown Royal Oak. But moving south, the city of Detroit has an opportunity to continue this on Woodward easily down to 6 Mile. Because there, Woodward is 10 lanes wide. You have five lanes in the other direction. And in fact, in a lot of places, they allow parking next to Palm Park on Woodward in one of the lanes. So they could easily continue this down to McNichols. And the Joe Louis Greenway is a project that the city of Detroit is doing. It's a 34-mile-long bike pathway. They had a $2 million planning grant. They have a DNR grant to acquire seven and a half miles of abandoned railroad right-of-way. And they're planning separated off-road bicycle facilities. And I'll show you a map of this in a minute, but this is their plan. They have a combined walk and bike path that's separated from the road. The cool and key thing is that this is McNichols. So if you can get, if Detroit can carry the bike lanes on Woodward down to McNichols and then you can, Woodward becomes much more difficult to do bicycle, bicycle infrastructure south of McNichols. I think if you drive the street, you just know that. So here at McNichols, you have the opportunity with the Joe Louis Greenway to connect to this Ring Route. And the easy path right to downtown is through this abandoned railroad right-of-way, which is going to be one of the first phases that they do because it's off-road and it's easy to convert that to a pathway. So when you talk about, you know, bicycle routes and you have to build a bike network, this segment from 8 to 696 could link to a very key part of the bike, the regional bike network that moves down into Detroit. So we're just trying to, you know, do our part here.
That's cool.
Yeah. So what we're asking tonight is for the city commission to adopt this as part of our complete streets plan. We have adopted the Woodward 696 where we did that study for the ditch area, a very long-term focused study. We adopted that as part of the complete streets plan. We adopted the Woodward, the WA3's sort of pan Woodward vision as part of our complete streets plan. This further develops the vision of the Woodward Avenue Action Association's complete streets plan. And adopting that gives it some weight of law. The state of Michigan adopted a complete streets law a few years ago. So MDOT has to consider complete streets plans when they do projects. They have to consult with the local municipalities. They've gotten much better in recent years about doing that, about, you know, taking seriously non-motorized pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. So that would be an important step for us. Next steps going forward, there are a number of other items on that checklist we need to keep knocking off before we can approach MDOT about implementing this. We're, I'm working with Ferndale right now to start to do some of those things. We continue to work with MDOT to keep them up to date on this and just keep this in front of them and on their radar that we're serious about working on this and pushing it forward.
That's cool.
From a bigger perspective, MDOT's potentially going to do a mill and fill, basically just a resurfacing on Woodward from Oak Ridge down to 8 Mile. It's the same thing that they did from Oak Ridge north to Birmingham a few years ago, probably six or seven years ago. They just come, they grind off the top layer and put down a new layer of asphalt. It's a Band-Aid fix on the, on the street. But it really needs to be done from Oak Ridge down to 8 Mile. I don't think there's really an opportunity to do any of these improvements as part of that project. One, because of timing, we have to get some of those checklist items done and that's going to take a while. And two, I don't know if it's the best time to talk about reducing bike lanes on Woodward when the whole I-75 project is going to be occurring over the next few years. So we know that Woodward is going to be a relief valve for a lot of that when I-75 is under construction. So I think a realistic timeframe for this would be for something to actually happen on Woodward is after the 75 project is done. And then, you know, we can, ideally with all that new capacity that I-75 has.
Right, that should take care of everything.
It should take care of everything for, you know, six months before all the new traffic appears to eat up all that capacity and we have the exact same delays that we already have now. But regardless, according to traffic engineer logic, we should absolutely have an opportunity to implement these bike lanes once that I-75 project is completed. So I think that's a realistic timeframe that we'll work towards and, again, continue to be in communication with MDOT about.
It's exciting.
Yeah. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on any of this.
Any questions for Jim?
No question. Well, I guess I'll get to a question. At the main, I know the Main Street cutoff in the Royal Oak is eternally problematic. I like the solution that, you know, squeezing that a little bit. It's still, I know what you're saying about having the cars that are going to turn right onto the freeway backed up a little bit more. One of my concerns is, you know, to access the east side and, you know, also to cross for pedestrians there, right there. I rely on a lot of that traffic clearing before I make the right turn and then go down into the alley. Yeah. So I guess my, and I, again, I understand this is very problematic for all parties. I guess just my worry is if, if, if this line of cars is waiting longer, yes, they clear, but then how does that affect people trying to cross the Service Drive? Automobiles trying to use the Service Drive to use the alley? It's not really a solution there if that's something that was considered as far as impacts north of that immediate.
I don't, well, I don't think it's going to impact people trying to use the alley as the back door into the east side because that traffic comes from the Service Drive. You don't drive up Main Street to turn, to turn in. So it really shouldn't impact that. For pedestrians crossing the Service Drive, we do have the project that's going forward on the Service Drive that's going to narrow. So it's going to be two lanes across the Service Drive at that location now. So that will help and shorten the pedestrian crossing time.
Yes.
That also has the benefit of if you're a motorist waiting to turn there, it takes less time for that pedestrian to get across.
Yes.
So now it should reduce the amount of time the motorist has to wait for that to clear so they can go. But, yeah. So I think there's some mitigating factors that should, you know, relieve that, but, yeah.
For sure. And maybe this is a question, I guess, chief. I mean, those are lines on the cement, right? I mean, what's the, what's, what's the penalty for people ignoring those lines in a vehicle?
So that's, that's where you have to do some other elements. You can see on here that the, these are illustrated, the little two white dashes here, that's some sort of vertical barrier.
Oh, okay.
And again, that's something we'd have to work with MDOT to see what they'll approve. The dashes here at the intersection are some sort of vertical barrier.
Okay.
So where you have cars turning, this will keep cars from encroaching onto the bike lanes. Here, this continues the protection for the bike lane. You know, I don't know what we can get approved. This is what has to be done in detailed fine design. Because this is only schematics, there would have to be a detailed design plan for the whole corridor that MDOT would approve. So, you know, I don't know what those would be, but there would have to be some sort of, it's not a protected bike lane unless you have protection. So what that protection is here, I'm not sure, but that would be something that we might pay attention to.
Good.
Thank you. And that intersection there is Kensington Boulevard. And I know that those of us who are trying to get out of the street, I mean, many times you have to sit and wait a very long time to get out of your own street.
Right.
And there is a sign that says, keep intersection clear, but it's, but it's further down that block so that people don't see it. So perhaps that could be more visible, like, you know, right at the corner, you know, keep intersection clear so that those of us who need to get out are able to do that. And people do drive incredibly fast along there. I mean, you know, it's, it's like the Indy 500, you know? And the, the speed limit does change because further back it's 35 miles an hour and then it changes to 45. And people act like they're already on the expressway when they're on that strip of road.
Little corner.
Yeah, yeah. So it can get pretty, pretty treacherous trying to get out, get out of the street.
Just, just a quick, an observation, when they installed the new pedestrian signals, they work differently. They don't turn to walk unless you press the button. And so I noticed that it creates some confusion with drivers and pedestrians and the people doing the U-turn on the Service Drive because the pedestrian signals don't indicate what people may be doing because they haven't been trained the new, the new way that they work. And I think they actually change the facing of the lighting as well if you do or don't press the button. So it's just an observation that as we look towards improving that, we might want to ask MDOT. First, I'm not sure exactly how they work and then if there's any data that we can receive on whether they're working the way we want them to. And then the other quick observation is the sidewalk leading under the railroad tracks into, into the Iron Ridge area is an awesome bike path. So as people are heading east and north, I've found that the first light is actually a great bike path, but the sidewalk markings aren't great because of the way it's broken apart. So if there's a way to include that as part of the plan, that would be awesome as a path north ahead of Hilton. I actually can't think of the name of the road.
Bermuda.
Bermuda, of course.
That's one of the Bermudas.
Yeah, it's one of the Bermudas.
It's a triangle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is a much more, like, robust plan than, you know, and incorporating that Joe Louis Greenway is incredible.
It's really great.
Yeah, because I know people have always taken Oakland and some different routes to get through there, but this would be absolutely incredible. Is that actually under construction, the Joe Louis?
No, it's not under construction yet. They did get the DNR grant to acquire the railroad right-of-way.
Oh, that's great.
And I know that they've got some big foundations who are behind. So I think the Knight Foundation and then the Ralph Wilson Foundation have both been supporting that, that project and that initiative.
Wow.
So.
Well, it's incredible the two directions. Yeah, the different directions it goes takes you to some really significant points downtown too.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, it connects all the way to the airport.
That's amazing.
So, I mean, it really is a huge regional link.
Wow.
For the whole area.
We'll let you sit in your seat, Amber. Did you?
I have a question. This crosswalk here, is part of the plan doing anything to make it more crosswalky so people see it?
So what we found when we did the test project was, was two things. One is that there actually are gaps where you can get across there. The bigger problem was visibility.
Yeah.
And because this is four lanes wide, it's a long way to get across. So by narrowing this, the fact that you, as a pedestrian, can come out further, you get a better view around the corner. So you have a much better view of what's coming. And then, you know, you've only got one lane of traffic to cross.
Right, I mean, I'll run across now and I'm fine, you know, if I'm running, but it's, it's not a matter of whether I can see them, you know, I can, but it's just a matter of, like, the speed in which people take that corner is.
Right.
For kids, like, as an adult, I can look, but like, I make Lakland walk all the way down to Sylvan when we live right there because it's just.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And it mitigates all of that. It forces everybody to be slower coming around that corner. Right, so basically we're not solving the problem, but we're making all of the elements of the problem better and safer.
We can't do any type of lights flashing crosswalk here? Is that not allowed because of the?
No, I mean, we could, we could look at like a hawk signal or something like that that flashes when you push the button there, you know, that's supposed to alert drivers that there's a pedestrian coming. So, yeah, those could all be parts of it. That would all be things we could look at during detailed design.
It's a defensive walking situation.
And it's really hard for the, for the us that live on that side and we're trying to get our kids to go over to camp and yet, you know, you have a job, so you're trying to find a safe way for them to get there. It's an eighth of a mile, you're like, they should all walk there, but getting across that is, you know, just terrifying. Right. And it's funny because like, first I had him go into this corner because I'm like, at least it broke it up in fewer, in a couple sections. But then he said, well, I feel better going down to Sylvan and just running. And so it's just, it's like that.
That's good.
I know, but it is, like, it's a pair.
So one thing that is happening with that, and I don't have the images here, but we can do mine images. With the, with the 696 Service Drive project that's occurring this year that they're doing, that southernmost or the right, as you're driving down the eastbound Service Drive, that far right lane. So imagine you're getting off of 696 at, at Woodward. And you get off and you're staying over towards the right. And as you're driving and pretend you're in the lane that's next to the curb, then the, the right turn only lane at southbound Woodward develops and you can go get in that right turn only lane. That's going away. And then actually the, through the, the median of, of Woodward, so starting at the bridge across the ditch and then by the triangle in between Woodward and Main Street, that right most lane is going away.
So.
So you'll, you'll actually have more of a buffer.
Yeah, because it's just such a thin little strip there going over there.
So we're getting rid of that. And there's going to be a, so you're going to have an extra lane width of buffer between traffic and that sidewalk.
That's good.
So our goal there was, you know, at least it's hopefully going to be a, a less treacherous and violent feeling walk when you're there. Like, maybe it'll be a better route for pedestrians to take because there'll be more separation. And ideally, we can get some trees planted there or something, we'll see. But, so that, that is happening to hopefully improve that experience going up and crossing along the Service Drive.
And then to back what you said about the buttons, because we know when we're crossing how to cross and where to cross at 696 and Main here, but.
The Service Drive.
At the Service Drive, yeah. And so I wait and I was going over and some guy came over and just like laid on his horn honking at me because he had a green light.
Yeah.
He had a green light for pedestrians. But I think that some people look up and see that that's, I have the red hand even though I know it's my turn to walk. And if they are driving, they look at this and they assume that they have the right to over pedestrians there. But, yeah. But yeah, I was like, make a honk and yell at the window even. So it's just like when, when you're driving north there, you're turning, you have a green light, you're turning right.
It's counterintuitive the way it was.
And if you look at the crossing signal, you say, oh, those people have, have the no-no.
Yeah.
But that's the only time you can cross, so clearly it's where we're supposed to.
Currently, it would be retraining what we know to.
Exactly.
We have to hit the button where for years we've never hit to hit a button.
Right.
But it takes that time because you walk up and it's getting ready to turn. If you hit the button, it doesn't just turn, so then you have to sit through an entire cycle for it too. It's not pedestrian there.
Yeah, so all of that infrastructure that they just put in with the signals project, they're going to be tearing out with this other project. It's going to be the same signals, but one of the, let me, let me ask MDOT about this when they're doing the service drive, when they narrow that crossing down and see if we can do like maybe a pedestrian priority.
Yeah.
So when you push the button, a pedestrian priority signal is where when you push the button, it turns the pedestrian signal to walk, but it holds the red for the cars.
Yeah.
So even if you just gave like five or six seconds of pedestrian priority, so the pedestrians go while, while both directions of traffic still have a red.
Yeah.
It increases safety for that pedestrian and then, because it, what it does is it eliminates that situation of the driver feeling like they have two and a half tons of priority regardless of, you know, the pedestrian, you know, to go through the green and run you over. So let me see if that's something that we can or is built into the project.
It's worth saying, MDOT did a really good job of getting that done quickly, that corner, versus the mess that we've had there over the last couple of summers. Like when they started pouring, they poured that and had it back open pretty quickly. So it's kind of nice.
Are there any other comments or questions for Jim? Okay, now I'm going to ask you. Is there a motion to approve?
Your honor, I move the Woodward Avenue bicycling and walking safety audit to be adopted as part of the city's Complete Streets Plan.
Is there support?
Suck it.
All right, let's have a vote.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Fizia?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
It's exciting. Good. Cool.
That is exciting. It is cool.
Figure in another 20.
Wow.
I'll be celebrating my 61st. Next item, city manager's report.
Hope it's wheelchair accessible.
That's right. Just I'll have my little.
We'll have like tubes on the Jetson.
There you go.
Yeah, it's triple A, right?
Yeah, that's right. But it only stops at 80, so I don't know.
Just a couple of updates. The, let's see, we've got the sidewalk project which is starting. They actually started a little bit early with some saw cutting on the east side with the replacements for city sidewalks. I think they were supposed to be out today. I wasn't able to get over there and see if they were starting on Woodward Heights or not, but that's good. We're replacing close to 1,500 sidewalk flag citywide, so it's a big, big project. So we should have much better sidewalks here soon. So, yeah. It should be a small disruption for most people's lives. If it's, if there's sidewalk flags that cross your driveway, you will lose some access to your driveway for about a week. So that is an inconvenience, but you know, bear with us.
Are they moving Woodward Heights? No. Is that their plan? I mean.
I'm not exactly sure what their plan is yet because I just got an email from the engineer on Monday afternoon saying that they were going to come out on Woodward Heights and start tomorrow. Is that okay? I said, sure. So I don't know what the exact detail or sequencing is, but I would assume they would move north.
I'm still working on my median from consumers, so I just want to make sure.
Right.
When they come and do my sidewalks.
Yes. So, yeah. That's it. The Gainesboro Park lighting project is another one that we're working on. We actually have the, the materials, the lights on order. Those are going to be delivered soon. I'm in conversations actually with Ustand because they're our general contractor for all things about installation for the lights. So hopefully that'll be early fall. We'll get those in the ground for when, you know, light starts getting.
Yay.
When they're resated, more scarce.
Good. I think that's it. Any questions?
Any questions? No.
Woodward Heights, I know Ferndale is construct, you know, they're working on, they're part of Woodward Heights. It's one, closed in one direction. I know there's a timeline where that will be shifted. I know we talked over the course of the last year about improvements that we could make to Woodward Heights as far as making it more pedestrian friendly, trying to get a handle on some of the speeds through there. Can you just give us an update on Woodward Heights?
Sure. So yes, it will be returning to two-way traffic for a window of time. I was told that that was going to be after the Fourth of July holiday, so I'm not exactly sure when, you know, construction schedules. But they will be returning the segment from Hilton to Pleasant Ridge to two-way traffic. And that will probably be until September when that, that occurs. And then after that, it's going to go back to one-way traffic, but this time it's going to be eastbound only. So Pleasant Ridge residents, you'll be able to get home, but you won't be able to leave.
With the whole town being far away.
Right. So our specific improvements, we talked about these at the traffic calming town hall in Woodward Heights as a priority street for us to implement some of those like we've done on Ridge. So an update on that is that we have a, a striping contract citywide that's going to be done. We're going to be doing crosswalks and just road markings throughout the city. A lot of our crosswalks and stop bars are faded and you just need to renew those every now and again. One of the things that we talked about in the town hall and with the meeting with the Woodward Heights residents was doing edge stripes on Woodward Heights, much like we did on Ridge. Ridge is a 26-foot wide street. That's two 13-foot wide lanes. That's wider than you have on any interstate freeway. You have a 12-foot line, 12-foot wide lane on an interstate freeway. So the edge stripes narrow that down to a 20-foot cross-section, 10-foot vehicle lanes in either direction. And that, that just by itself slows down traffic speeds. And it also creates a space for experienced riders and joggers who use that street to at least have some space that's marked off for them. We can't do sanctioned bike lanes because we just don't have the width there. But the concept on Woodward Heights is the same because Woodward Heights is 30 feet wide. Your typical residential street is 27 feet wide. So because Woodward Heights is a half-mile road, it was built at 30 feet wide with parking on one side of the street. There used to be back in the day, parking on both sides of the street. Now there's only parking on one side of the street. So the situation we have there is with 30 feet, you have a parking lane that's seven and a half feet wide. So you functionally, again, have a space that provides two 11 and a half to 12-foot wide travel lanes on that street. So we have the opportunity again to visually narrow that, that street through striping as well. So there, we're going to be adding an edge stripe to define the parking lane on the south side of the street. That's going to be eight feet from the curb and then another stripe on the north side that's three and a half feet from the curb. So you'll have a three and a half foot striped off area on the north side of the street that you could ride a bike in, but it'll also visually narrow and compress the area that vehicles can travel, which will further reduce traffic speeds. So we're waiting for that to be done because we don't want to be putting any test projects out that get in the way of the striping equipment. I'm not sure when exactly that's going to happen. PK striping is very busy this time of year. Once that striping gets down, we'll install those test projects that we talked about at the town hall meeting to further do some traffic calming on the street. So yeah, we've got that equipment also, that material for those test projects that's being delivered next week. So we'll have that, we'll be ready to go to implement that as well. But that's, that's the overall plan. Hopefully, we can do the traffic calming test projects during the period when we still have two-way travel because that's more of the normal condition. And that'll give us a better opportunity to study the impact of those. If you only have one-way travel in and out, that, that influences, you know, what traffic is. But ultimately, we'll know if the test projects work just because we can drive in both directions, you know, in our, our segment of Woodward Heights and see just how those test projects function with cars moving around. And then if we want to make them permanent, we can.
Okay, cool.
I don't know if there's anything I didn't touch on?
No, that sounds good. I know, you know, as a group and with the residents on that street, you know, looking for solutions there. And I think, yeah, the, the striping will, I think, you know, greatly reduce some of the speeds there.
They were excited about that idea.
When we did the striping on Ridge, it, it actually reduced travel speeds by about two and a half miles an hour, just close to, I think it was like 8%. And so that, that's a huge difference when you're on a residential street like that. So Ridge used to be the bar none, the fastest street in town. And now it's just sort of a normal fast street in town tied with, you know, all the other ones that we have speeding problems on. But that alone is a, you know, something that, that improves the situation.
Yeah. And thank you.
Well, we'd really appreciate if you could keep Gainesboro blocked right at Woodward Heights. It has really slowed the traffic on Sylvan. It's cut it down and it's much.
That isn't Ferndale.
See?
So we'd have to do some unsanctioned, Jack, can you?
Well, we, you know, we're still waiting for those letters of support. Just saying, just saying.
All right. I understand.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Moving on to other business.
Just real quick, Red Notice, A True Story of High Finance, Murder, and One Man's Fight for Justice. This will be the July Book Club, Wednesday, July 17th at 7:00 PM at the community center.